That results in increased runoff rates from compacted soils. We see it on, that's just pipelines for all kinds of construction sites. So what affects continuing on this topic of the effects of the land use changes, the other considerations, the red clay soils that are known for high erosion potential. This photo is from the Potato River, but which is actually on the eastern part of the watershed, but on the western part of the watershed in particular, there's a lot of red clay soils. That comprising a large portion of the project area. And that's susceptible, red clays in particular susceptible to erosion. And we observed that in the field. These exposed slopes and the rails and gullies that are prone to erosion effects when they're exposed. So in quick summary, you know, removing that forest canopy and litter and def layers increases peak runoff rates. It also increases runoff volumes. So you have a quick peak after event and also the ongoing volume discharge from the watershed. Also increased erosion sediment transport into receiving streams. And sort of the analog for this, and this is a large scale, but on the Marengo River watershed where there has been a lot of land disturbance. There is increased, there's been changes in hydrology, increases in turbidity or sediment in that watershed. This was a lot of disturbance in that watershed, but you know, it's, this is well established in the literature, you disturb a watershed, you're going to get changes in runoff and more sedimentation delivered to the receiving waters. So how are those effects relevant to the Bad River bans water quality or water body classifications? And I know that Mr. McNerney talked this morning about the fans water quality standards. I'll talk about these very briefly, but the Bad River and Potato River are both the outstanding tribal resource waters. And the yellow circles show the Bad River watershed is on the south end, on the bottom. The Potato River is on the east side to the right. And this outstanding travel resource water designation states, you can see in the yellow highlighted text. No new or increased discharges or alterations of the background conditions are allowed to outstanding tribal resource waters. Now that continuing on to that text, there are some short term temporary allowable lowering of water quality in more than six months. It may be provided if it will arise from one of the following types of activities. And I'm not going to read all these, but I'll paraphrase, but the first one is maintenance repair basically of infrastructure, roads, boat bridges, boat lanes, things like that. The second allowable activity would be response actions taken to alleviate or releasing the environment for a hazardous substance or contaminant. Especially if it poses an imminent substantial danger to public health or welfare. And then the final one is actions undertaken to restore culturally important species in their habitats. It's notable that new infrastructure construction is not listed as one of the allowable activities for short term lowering of water quality to an outstanding tribal resource water. So we conducted engineering calculations to estimate the effects on hydrology from the proposed project. And the general procedure, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but in summary, we use the natural resources conservation service curve number method. To estimate conceptual changes to the two year 24 hour peak runoff caused by the line five project. So that's two year event, two year return frequency. That's a half. It's for this particular study, that'd be 50% probability of recurrence each year. And then for a 24 hour duration storm, just to get a sense for how runoff might occur or it might change. And that's a standard storm event to use for this type of analysis. So curve numbers are widely used in engineering methodology. And we looked at two scales of changes in the hydrology. We looked at watershed scale analysis. You can see on the figure on the right. This is all the, the curve numbers shown in GIS, all the different curve number values. But the black lines show the different watersheds that are that cross the Bad River reservation boundary. We looked at those watershed scale, and then we also looked at the sub basin scale where we broke down those individual watersheds in specific sub basins, which is really important. For looking at localized effects, because if you look broadly at the entire, you know, the Bad River watershed overall, or the large watersheds. You may not understand or get an understanding of the localized effects that can be occurring in individual sub bases. So we also checked the reasonableness of the curve number results using three different methods listed there. I won't go into those, but the, the results were confirmed, the findings from the curve number methodology that were used. So the analysis compared the pre-construction runoff conditions, that'd be existing conditions with two post-construction scenarios. And the reason we use two post-construction scenarios that I've shown here are to have bounding conditions because this hydrology is, there's some uncertainty there. It's not exact. So you need to have some bounding conditions, a low range estimate of the hydrologic effects as well as a high range estimate of hydrologic effects. The lower range estimate would be shrubs, shrub scrub vegetation remaining with no soil compaction. And the higher range estimate, so a higher runoff that would be, would be herbaceous grassland with some soil compaction afterwards. Which even if the scarification occurs, soil compaction is not uncommon for construction sites. So we looked at those two ranges. So what were the watershed scale impacts that the line five project could have on hydrology? And we looked at 15 watersheds. Again, those are shown in the black boundaries on the figure on the left. And you can see the reroute shown in red and the reservation boundary in green. You can see in the, in the table on the right, the 15 watersheds evaluated, there's a large range in the area upstream from the Bad River reservation boundary. If you look at the bottom, the White River is about 275 square miles. If you go up just, you know, four or five rows, you can see those unnamed tributaries. Those are in that southwest corner of the reservation. They're well less than a square mile. So it's a big range in terms of the watershed size and of course the runoff they have, and also the effects that the pipeline could have on those individual tributaries or individual watersheds. So the, the highlighted yellow ones are, are watersheds in that southwest corner shown by the, the yellow rectangle on the large map. And these smallest watersheds are the ones that have the largest proportional impacts from the line five disturbance. And that's, you know, makes sense. You've got these small watersheds proportionally. The reroute corridor is going to be more significant than it would be for the larger watersheds where it's proportionally smaller area. So if you look, this is zooming in on that southwest corner again, and it gives you a sense of where those watersheds are in the line five reroute corridor. And you can see again, these same watersheds that have the smallest relative area are the ones also that have closest distance from line five reroute location to the reservation boundary. So the, the results of the analysis, this is the estimated watershed scale impacts. Again, we talked about watershed scale and sub basin scale. These are the watershed scale impacts. And at the low range of estimates for the, again, for the two or 24 hour storm, it was ranged from about point one to 1.4% relatively low. In terms of that's increased runoff rate compared to the, the existing or pre-construction condition. We looked at the high range of estimates. And that was slightly higher. You can see that one unnamed tributary, the smaller one, unnamed tributary number three was about point one to four percent roughly increased runoff. So that's, that's again, looking at it from the broad watershed scale. But then when we looked at the sub basin scale impacts. And this figure shows the, the small red lines, those are the different individual sub basins or catchments within those larger watersheds. We used the HEC HMS standard model from the hydrologic engineering center from the Corps of Engineers. The purpose of that was to estimate changes and runoff in individual sub basins that intersect the proposed reroute. And this is where the scaling was important to look at the differences. So then we looked at the lower range and you can see the high, the colors where those sub basins intercepted the line five reroute. If you look at the south, like the trout, there are sub basins there that didn't intersect the reroute quarter. So we didn't look at those. But on the lower range, the two year 24 hour peak flow increased about point one to five percent in individual sub basins. And then in the higher range, we looked at the low and high range, the high range was about point one to nine percent individual sub basins, particularly up in Von Creek. Where we saw more substantial changes in runoff rates. Where then you get the tipping point, and this is described in the literature, you get a tipping point. And it can be enough hydrologic change where we suddenly have erosion sedimentation occurring. And it's very case specific. I mean, you, you really can't look at things overall broad perspective, you need to look at these individual locations where things will be changing. The key point is sub basins have increased potential for localized impacts, increased potential for runoff and sedimentation. So a brief summary of the hydrologic effects. We've talked about compacting soils, converting forests to clear condition. These changes will increase runoff, peak rates as well as runoff volumes. They'll increase exposure of soil to erosion, they'll increase potential for sediment transport. Engineering calculations show that these are the calculations I just presented while minor acknowledging their minor. The line five project will cause real, not de minimis changes to hydrology. And the model findings are supported by conceptual understanding and wide body of literature, these type of changes will have hydrologic effects on the, on, have changes to the hydrology. In particularly increased potential for localized impacts. How are these findings relevant to the, the 401A2 and Bad River Ban specifically? And the assessment of line five effects on hydrology and associated sediment transport on the Bad River Ban reservation does respectfully not appear to have been addressed in the court's evaluation of project impacts, specifically the hydrologic changes. These changes, the hydrology would not comply with the Bad River Ban's outstanding tribal resource water standard that we just discussed briefly of no new or increased discharges or alterations of background conditions. As well as not compliant with other narrative standards that were described by Mr. McNerney earlier this morning. That was the, the first topic is discussion of hydrology. And I'm going to talk about HDD horizontal directional drilling, inadvertent releases and their potential changes on sediment transport and water quality on the project. So what is the problem with an inadvertent release from HDD potentially occurring? Well, first, Enbridge has acknowledged HDD IRs are not uncommon. And it stated the inadvertent returns are not unusual, unexpected. And that's a appropriate statement. That's for Enbridge or anybody conducting HDDs. We've worked in our firm with different projects where there have been dealt with HDD IRs and responding to that. And so it's not an uncommon occurrence with HDDs. It's recognized can happen. And HDD IR adverse effects can be substantial. Now I want to make clear, this photo is not from an Enbridge project. It was a photo that was available of an HDD IR in Ohio, the Rover Pipeline Project. That was a large spill, approximately 2 million gallons of drilling mud, but the effects can be significant. We look at other Enbridge pipe on projects that have had numerous HDD inadvertent returns. The line three replacement project in Minnesota in 2021, there were 28 separate inadvertent returns identified. And this is from the, this is from the Enbridge's documentation, actually in appendix 18 in the Wisconsin DNR EIS report. But 28 separate IRs, the volume of drilling mud released, many were small. Many were in the 10 gallon range, but there were also larger one. The largest was 6,000 to 9,000 gallons. There was another HDD IR that was identified to be 1,200 gallons. Another HDD IR was identified to be 900 gallons, so larger ones as well too. Looking back, the documentation, this is from the bottom quote there is, this is from the Minnesota Department of Resources, the license for utility to across the public waters. That, at that time, is identified by Enbridge's engineers, they evaluate each crossing and you see the highlighted yellow text. The above mentioned sites are at low risk for an undetected inadvertent release of HDD drilling mud. So at that time, going into that project, it was identified low risk for undetected IR. But nevertheless, there were substantial releases and these releases can occur not just on an Enbridge project, but HDD IR. Anytime you have HDD occurring, especially long, you know, long distances. And I think that may be discussed later this afternoon, the technical details about the HDDs. So how many HDDs are proposed along the line five project and where are they? So here's the, the reservation boundary, the line five reroute. This shows all the highlighted HDD proposed crossings. It was discussed this morning that there's 12 HDDs that are planned. This is identified, the HDD is planned for 11 water crossings. There's another HDD under a highway that we didn't evaluate because that's not really directly affecting your water course in the same way. And then there's also a direct bore that we didn't address as well. But so the 11 water crossings planned to be crossed by HDD. And the, the AC is very distant from the Bad River reservation boundary. You can see the Bad River circled in red at the bottom. That's about 12 miles or so approximately. But then there's other ones that are much closer again on that southwest corner of the reservation boundary and I keep going back to that because it's important because the proximity of the pipeline to the reservation boundary is so close there that the potential for effects on the reservation and for water quality standards is really heightened on that southwest corner. So that's Troutbrook there on the southwest corner, but there's large variability in, in the distances from the HDD to the reservation boundary. And I also mentioned, we're, we're not talking about the direct boring that was going to be used for another location that's on the Marengo River, but I won't be talking about that. So how do the water courses differ that are proposed to be crossed by HDD? Because they are all, as you can imagine, are not the same. Again, the, the locations of the HDDs and also three examples. One is the Bad River. This is photos taken up by Mellon. The mean annual flow rate there, this is the, actually the flow rate at the reservation boundary, but it's about 224 cubic feet per second. And that particular river at that location, you could canoe across it or swim across it, but it's gives the idea that the scale there from the photo, this photo is taken right near Mellon. The Troutbrook, you can see circle there on the bottom. That's a mean annual flow rate more than an order magnitude less. That one, if you describe, you could walk across it, you get your ankles wet in kind of average flow conditions. But much smaller than the Bad River. And then the Billy Creek. Then I had the opportunity to take these photos myself, so you know, look at them and observe them in the field. Billy Creek is much smaller. That's almost well, next door magnitude down from Troutbrook. But on that mean annual flow rate, it's like three CFS and that's when you literally could jump across. So a big difference, and that makes a big difference in terms of what an HDD IR effect could have in terms of water quality in those streams. So what is the water quality standard for Bad River Reservation at most risk of being violated by an HDD IR? And this has been discussed already, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it goes back to this turbidity standard that shall not exceed five NTUs over natural background. If background's below 50 NTU or 50 NT or less, when natural background's greater than 50 NTU, turbidity shall not increase more than 10% above background. So this is the, the water quality standard we're focused on and we're interested in evaluating. So what were the scenarios for an HDD IR evaluated by Enbridge? And this discussion is based on what was provided in the documents we received reviewing preparing for this. I know there was discussion by Dr. Horn this morning about some other water courses that were evaluated. These slides don't address those other water courses that were evaluated, but I'll talk about what we were, were able to review and the documents were provided in the sediment discharge monitoring report that was part of the DCDD for the, for the core, for the EA. So the water course that was valued, it was the Bad River. The flow rate conditions were low flow, average flow and high flow. The HDD inadvertent release volumes were for the two scenarios, a pilot hole and final, final ream hole inadvertent releases. So over 30,000 gallons and over 60,000 gallons of drilling mud released in those two different scenarios. So the results from Enbridge's consultant and I, I'll just, just the quote from the report, page 74 for the sediment discharge monitor report was by 2,000 meters or two kilometers downstream. TSS predictions for all scenarios were below the calculated threshold of 19 milligrams per liter identified for the study. I know there's discussions about that 19 milligram per liter by Dr. Horn this morning. Therefore, TSS concentrations would likely fall below this threshold by the time the suspended sediments reach the reservation boundary. So saying it would be the, the scenarios evaluated in this study would not exceed that threshold on the reservation boundary. So what are the issues with applying Enbridge's HDD analysis to the overall potential impacts, looking at all the potential HDDs IRs for the project? Well, the two main concerns we have respectfully are the analysis is for the Bad River HDD location only. That's what we've been, had provided to us. Which is not a conservative scenario for, I'll describe why. There's 11 proposed HDD locations underwater courses. First of all, the Bad River average flow rates are higher and much higher than many other HDD locations. A higher flow in the Bad River provides greater dilution than other HDD locations. You have greater dilutions, you have lower concentrations. The Bad River HDD locations further away from the reservation boundary than all the other HDD locations. And one of the main factors of an HDD IR to evaluate it's, as discussed this morning, it's, you know, roughly a little less than mostly water, a little less than five percent of betonite compound. But as that's released, you have settling is one of the main factors to remove that from the water column. And the further away you are from the reservation boundary, the longer you have for that material to settle out to the bottom and not reach the, the reservation boundary in this case. So if, is an evaluation of a reservation of a location further away, there's more opportunity to sell out that material. The other concern is the TSS turbidity relationship analysis based in the sediment discharge monitoring report that we're provided, was available to us. Used TSS and turbidity data from 87 to 93 from Bad River USGS gauge. And that was used to determine the allowable amount of TSS that would correlate with the, the turbidity threshold, the band. The concern is the TSS turbidity relationship for the Bad River cannot be assumed to be applicable to water, other water courses. And this is well established in the literature. And this one quote from, this is Wisconsin DOT below showed that relationship. You can see the, the numbers shared there. But the relationship of TSS to turbidity, that ratio varied from point six four to 3.4 through their literature search. And so there's huge variability in terms of even time of year, but then also within water courses. You can't take a Bad River sample set and apply it to other water courses because they've got very different characteristics. The Bad River and Troutbrook are very different stream systems and their turbidity TSS concentrations are very different. So what type of independent assessment was conducted regarding potential for an HDD IR to violate the Bad River Ban's water quality standards? We did a mass balance analysis that accounts for advection, particle settling dispersion. We looked at three different scenarios of drilling mud. We looked at 1,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons. Those first two were in the range that were observed generally at the line five project. Or I'm sorry, the line three project. 30,000 gallons would be three times the largest observed at the line three project. But certainly much larger than 3,000 gallons of IRs have been released in IRs before. We also looked, we used flow rates and water courses, the mean annual flow rate for each water course is a baseline scenario. We also looked at adjusting flow rates to see how that might affect it, just to look at a range of scenarios. How that might, how that might affect the compliance with Bad River turbidity standard. And so these show different trends. And that's the main point, like all models, really you want to look at, what are the trend differences here? What are you seeing like small streams, what's happening, large streams, low flow, high flow? How do those, how do those all affect things? So our calculation is found, and this is consistent with the findings in the Enbridge study. That HDD was not expected to exceed the ban's five NTU standard for increased turbidity for scenarios evaluated for, for, first of all, the Bad River. I'll explain briefly this, what this plot shows, the vertical axis, this is increased total suspended solids. And if you took the time set, time step back further, it goes up higher. It's really high right when it's released and then it settles out as you move downstream. The horizontal axis is distance downstream from the HDD release location. That big tall black line is where the Bad River Reservation boundary is for that particular water course. So we talked about Bad River being about 12 miles downstream. That's why that vertical line is there. On that, the color open circles, those are the different volumes of releases. So the, the pink ones is 30,000 gallon HDD IR. The orange one in the middle is the 10,000 gallon release and then the green circles are the 1,000 gallon release. So the different scenarios. And then it's kind of complicated, but this will be important for other plots we look at. The, the horizontal lines show the increased amount of TSS that corresponds with an allowable amount of turbidity increase. So the top dash line corresponds with the study presented in the Enbridge sediment discharge monitoring report. That's about 19 milligrams per liter allowable. And then the, the lower line corresponds to about one to one. So that'd be five milligrams per liter of TSS to five NTUs. And that's based on studies from USGS from Minnesota water courses where it had close to one to one ratio for TSS to turbidity. And interestingly, the data presented this morning showed in the 25 data set. It looked like the ratio, the good statistical correlation was approximately one to one. Again, you don't want to put too precise a number on these because it's varying all the time, but so that number can change significantly. That's why we provided a range there. So you'll see in this one all those standards upstream, but before it gets to the Bad River Reservation boundary. That's why we, we did not predict an exceedance of the standard for that scenario or released on the Bad River. Similarly, for Von Creek, we looked at that and did not see an exceedance of the ban's five NTU standard for turbidity on Von Creek. That's Von Creek is off to the east side of the reservation. However, for other streams, our calculations did find an HDD that was predicted. And we'll look at those. And this is, AC was predicted to exceed the ban's five NTU standard. Here's the Potato River. That's off to the, off to the east side of the reservation. You can see the, the 30,000 gallon release scenario did exceed the, the standards before it got to the reservation for both standards, the higher one and the lower. And that, that medium, the medium release, the 10,000 gallon also was close to exceeding for the upper, the, the dash line scenario. I'll just go through these quickly, but so we had multiple scenarios, the Brunswick River, we had scenarios where that standard could be exceeded. Tyler Forks, we looked at, saw there's a scenario where that could be exceeded. That's just the, the most extreme. That's the 30,000 gallon scenario release. But then we also looked at other scenarios where you vary the flow rate in the stream. That can make a difference because on some of these smaller creeks, if the water is so shallow, it can settle out quickly because the water depth is not that deep. But if you increase the flow, and this is, so this is three times the average annual flow rate. But this is, you know, depending on the time of year, you can easily have this one on the left, Troutbrook easily have 45 CFS, all of these, that's a, within the normal range seasonally variability. You can see Troutbrook. There is potential for exceeding the standard, same with Billy Creek, significant there. We looked at Billy Creek. This is, these are all in that southwest corner of the reservation. That's kind of the focal area, Silver Creek as well. So the summary of findings from HDD IR analysis. The HDD evaluation provided by Enbridge's consultant, and again, this is what we had, was available to us to review. Not any new information that was discussed this morning, only evaluated HDD to Bad River. We respectfully don't think that is a conservative scenario nor the appropriate one to look at. You should look at the other water courses, smaller water courses, and particularly those, you know, smaller ones, they have less to Yeah, smaller ones, they have less dilution, in particular ones that are closer to the Bad River reservation boundary are the ones that you're really looking for a potential for an exceedance. Also, the TSS turbidity ratio, we're going to that more, but you should not apply data from one watershed to another one. So if you're looking at this potential to exceed the Bad River standard, you really should look at that case by case data for each individual watershed. Because they're very unique. Our analysis found as just showed Bad River Von Creek for scenarios, we did not, we evaluated, we did not see an exceedance of the standard. And that's consistent with what was found scenarios valued by Enbridge for Bad River. However, there were also multiple other streams where we did find that you had a potential for an exceedance of the standard for the scenarios that we evaluated. Okay, finally, the last topic is potential effects of soil disturbance from line five project on water quality. And so why is there concern about the potential for water quality impacts from erosion in upland areas disturbed by the line five reroute construction? So there's numerous water bodies being crossed. And there's lots of different ways to sort of slice and dice the numbers here, but just from the cores draft EA itself. Page 14 lists 72 water bodies cross. They're regulated by the Corps of Engineers. 191 water bodies cross that are not rated regulated by the Corps of Engineers. And that would be 100, but then there's many crossings that involve access roads. That's a big part of the construction disturbance. And then, of course, construction, lay down yards, things like that. And also the mainline valve installation is identified. So another part of the aspect of the project. And then another way to sort of slice and dice the number of crossings per the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, the EIS is 136 streams and rivers crossed. So the key point here is there's numerous water crossings. There's high potential for water quality impacts from erosion at those water crossings, both during and importantly, after construction, while vegetation being reestablished. Because we all recognize that once a project's buttoned up, erosion doesn't stop. You still have disturbed watershed vegetation to remove. There's still potential for erosion after the project has been, you know, recreated and established and after erosion controls have been implemented to recognizing erosion controls, BMPs will be implemented as part of the project. But I can also say after with personal experience, I've spent a lot of time looking at pipeline corridors that there can be long term effects, long, long term effects in years after from erosion pipeline quarters. There's that potential particularly on steep, steep slopes and where you're near water courses. Hey, why is there concern about potential for water quality impacts from erosion upland areas? So we've already talked about the right away corridor, zooming in again on that that southwest corner. Again, we keep coming back to that, but that's important because you got that close proximity to the reservation boundary. And this figure shows again, the close, the close distance between the corridor and the reservation boundary for those watersheds, in particular in that area. And we look at the the right away disturbance as a percentage of watershed areas. And I think there was some discussion this morning about the fraction of area disturbed. But again, this is a good example. You need to look at a local scale. And for this particular for this particular table shows three different examples, the Brunswick River trap work in Billy Creek. And you can see that disturbed portion of watershed for Brunswick River is 1/100 of a percent and Trout Brooks 0.3% and then Billy Creek is 1.5%. And you get to this small unnamed tributaries, you get even higher percentages. But that's why you need to look at this, a very local specific analysis, because if you look broadly, may look like, gosh, there's, there's not too, too much impact. But if you look at look at individual watersheds, you the 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 amount, the percentage can go up and that can make a big difference in terms of of hydro crossing particular watershed. So what's the scope of the analysis by Enbridge regarding water quality impacts from erosion? So this is in the dis sediment discharge monitoring report. It talked about short term sedimentation effects from temporary dams and evaluated small crossings for four hours total, two hours at the installation, two hours from the removal of the dam. And for medium water courses discharged for five hours or 10 hours total, five hours in the beginning, five hours of the removal of the dam. And then the compliance with standard is based for all the water course courses, the small and medium water courses was using that TSS turbidity relationship. allowable increase of 19 milligrams per liter TSS was applied to all the small and medium water courses. And again, we've talked about that. You should not apply that to from one, one water course to another, you should not apply those data. The assessment, most importantly, does not address the erosion from the disturbed upland areas occurring for 41 miles of right away involving disturbance of approximately 930 acres. Doesn't affect the long term effects of erosion from disturbed areas, even recognizing erosion control measures that will be will be implemented on the project when it's completed. And again, it doesn't address the very relationship between TSS and turbidity for different streams and rivers. Did any reviewing agencies identify information gaps with the scope of the erosion analysis by Enbridge? Answers yes. The Wisconsin DNR noted the emission in the analysis provided in the sediment discharge monitoring report. And they stated specifically that the modeling of the sediment discharge, the stream is focused on sediment from stream crossings. The modeling does not address potential sources of sediment to stream from upland soil erosion. Continuing in the blue highlighted text to address this information gap, DNR adapted soil loss and sediment discharge tool for use with J software to model relative risk of sediment discharge from these other areas. And through the description of the tool, it was used by Wisconsin DNR was the estimated erosion based on duration of construction slope, slope length, surface condition. All those things you imagine would affect erosion. I mean, a steep slope is going to be more important to erosion than a flat slope. On the disturbance is going to make a big difference. How much is disturbed? And then it included erosion control BMPs. Also looked at local rainfall and then implementation of standard erosion control practices were included in in the analysis. So what were the results of the independent erosion calculations? They looked at two scenarios with varying periods of construction duration. One was a short duration scenario occurring from March 31st to July 18th. That's 106 days. In those, in that short duration scenario, the results were approximately 1% of all mile markers exceeded the Wisconsin DNR seven threshold of five tons per acre of the project. So relatively small for this short duration scenario, approximately 1% of the mile markers, they're one tenth of a mile resolution on those mile markers. Then they looked at the long duration scenario occurring from March 31st to December 31st. Approximately 25% of mile markers exceeded sediment threshold of five tons per acre. And that's important. So the likelihood of exceeding the duration is much greater for the longer duration scenario. And so if the construction extends for a period of time, that results in substantially higher sediment yields from erosion. And that is again, common sense. You know, the longer you have areas exposed and open up for construction, the longer you can be susceptible to erosion. This increases the risk of violating the Bad River bands water quality standards. What were the results of the continue on the results of the analysis by Wisconsin DNR? This is a table of the highest projected so total sediment yields along the the planned reroute corridor. This top one is unnamed. This is a tributary to Billy Creek. We've looked at Billy Creek. That's the drainage in the southwest corner intersects the reservation in the southwest corner of the reservation boundary. That range from the short duration to the long duration scenario, 17 to 69 tons of sediment discharge into that area tributary to Billy Creek. If you go down to another unnamed tributary, that's 10 to 38 tons of sediment discharge. And again, we're talking about Billy Creek. That's that the circle there in red. That's the creek you can jump across. So the significant sediment loads into a small receiving streams. Again, you have less assimilative capacity of the stream, lower flows for dilution, much higher potential for exceeding that turbidity standard for the band at the reservation boundary for these creeks, this example shows. And again, importantly, this is for the upland erosion coming off those areas that are you know, away, not, not just in the water course, not just at the time the construction occurring, this is the duration of the project. And again, to reemphasize, this includes the use of erosion control measures in the project. So the downstream impacts, water quality Bad River reservation most substantial along the small water bodies where line fives closest to the reservation boundary. Wisconsin DNR final EIS states disturbance areas are likely to exceed five tons per acre per year of sediment. Where where that's likely to occur would be required to reduce the potential discharge to implementation of additional erosion and sediment control measures. The erosion calculations show impacts for an extended duration. The Enbridge analysis was problematic in our opinion, respectfully, because the water quality impacts are valued only for short term effects during construction. Four hours for the small water courses, 10 hours total for the medium water courses. Not for the long duration impacts of erosion, even with, even if you have erosion control measures in place. And again, the turbidity TSS turbidity relationship, we've talked about that or concerned with that. Finally, wrapping up issues related to the Wisconsin DNR findings of the overland erosion. And I underline the word compliant specifically compliant implementation of maintenance of erosion control measures on large projects is particularly difficult, especially for a 41 mile construction corridor crossing of 136 streams and rivers and water bodies. And notably, Wisconsin DNR had 26 permit conditions for erosion and sediment control. The more permit conditions you have to comply with, the more difficult is in particular for a 41 mile construction corridor. And when you have you know, well over 100 stream and river crossings as part of the project. Thank you very much for your time.
And up next we have Brian Bronze Fire. Your time is starting now. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me clearly on screen there?
Yes, we have. Yeah. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Great, thank you. My name is Dr. Brian Branfroon and that's not my presentation. That's John Bratton's presentation. So I'm not sure if John is supposed to go before me or after me.
One second.
Absolutely.
He's the last one.
Okay, so we're gonna go.
We're doing with John.
Okay. Brandon first, and then we'll come back to you.
Absolutely. That's what I was expecting. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your attention, the opportunity to speak today. I'm John Bratton. I'll be focusing on complimenting the last presentation with a special focus on groundwater impacts. Any hints on advancing slides? Bring it briefly review my qualifications. I'm a senior science officer at a environmental consulting company based in Ann Arbor, Michigan, called Limno Tech. I have a PhD in geology from the University of California Berkeley and an undergraduate degree in geology and chemistry from Brown University. Licensed professional geologist in four states. Have 37 years of experience in hydrogeology, including drinking water supply, contaminated site groundwater characterization remediation, geochemistry, glacial geology. Also currently adjunct faculty at two institutions in the Detroit area, Wayne State University and Madonna University. And I also worked prior to working for Limno Tech, I've been at Limno Tech 10 years. Prior to that was 17 years with the federal government and with the USGS in the coastal marine geology program in Massachusetts. And also as the deputy lab director at the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's Great Lakes Environmental Research Lab in Ann Arbor. So we we are familiar with the the region here. We've seen maps like this multiple times. I want to focus on the on the fact that we have kind of two contrasting hydrogeologic settings along the pipeline route, which is shown in black along the bottom. The the lower elevation areas, this is a topographic map. So the lower elevations are in the greens and the pale yellow colors that tends to be flatter lying area with incised rivers that have cut into a a glacial lake plain, mostly covered with fine grain sediments, clays that overlies a deeper sandstone aquifer. But as you get up up into the headwaters, they're all headwaters, but into the higher elevations south of the reservation, you see the pipeline move up into into a set of hills there. So that's a different type of geology, different type of groundwater, a different type of mineralogy. And so that that distinction becomes important between kind of the lowlands and the highlands along this route and the and the pipeline route crosses up into the highlands and back down into the lowland, relative lowland areas. So this is a schematic representation of the three primary types of construction activities that will take place to prepare trenches for construction of the pipeline on on the 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 default method is is straight excavation where the soil conditions permit. One of the risks associated with that with trenching is is a breaching of confining layers, confining aquifers, particularly clays, which is would be most common along the eastern and the western ends of this of the the pipeline route. The directional drilling is intended to pass underneath water bodies. We've heard a lot about that in the last presentation. It's use of a drilling rig, but instead of going straight down like you would normally do for a water well or an oil or gas well, you're going to get an angle underneath, in this case, a creek, another case is a highway, and then returning back to the surface. The the blasting is necessary in areas where you can't excavate with with a regular trenching approach. We hear a lot about blasting this morning. One of the primary impacts would be on the the interaction between groundwater and surface water in bedrock areas, particularly wetlands that are perched existing in a bedrock trough or a bedrock depression. And you can see the human impacts on groundwater here would be primarily on drinking water wells, whether that's an individual well or a community well. In some cases, communities have a large well that then is used as a water supply to supply the the surrounding area. So the the specific impacts of those those activities would be on the on the hydrogeology broadly. And then this, I'll focus on the a little bit more detail on the on the HDD and the and the blasting impacts below. And I won't read these because I'll explain them in in subsequent slides. The image on the on the left is just a typical pipeline installation. This is actually a different Enbridge pipeline installed in Illinois in 2014. Called the Flanagan South Pipeline. You can see excavation there. You can see also a rock drill that's drilling borers that explosives would be placed in. And then the pipeline is laid alongside being prepared to be lowered into there. Now, this is another image of of a pipeline construction that just shows you the This is another image of, of a pipeline construction that just shows you the amount of disturbance involved, the amount of heavy equipment, the, the land clearing necessary to access the route, the trenching, and then the backfill. And I noticed that the, the route is, is going perpendicular to the slope. So this is where we have potential for erosion of the backfill. We heard earlier about trench breakers and other ways to prevent groundwater flow through that trench, but that's just gives you a sense of the scale and the scope. And this is an image taken by the tribe of, of a existing segment of line five that was eroded, we'll, he'll, a little bit more about this from some subsequent speakers, but this is kind of what can happen after the fact, in some cases, many years after the fact, but still cause impacts. So impacts relevant to the, the bad river reservation, the glacial bedrock aquifers that underlie the reservation, the surrounding areas serve as drinking water supplies, they also feed cold water trout streams, wetlands and springs, so there's this intimate connection between the groundwater and the surface water, really in both directions. The project will impact groundwater recharge areas and aquifer properties up gradient from wells and springs that are likely to be degraded by pipeline construction. And when I use that term upgrading, it's equivalent of upstream for groundwater. So groundwater flows from up gradient to down gradient, just like a stream would flow from upstream to downstream. This is a map of the, the aquifers shown in, in the colored shading and the wells. And if you notice, it's a high density of wells scattered along the pipeline route, these are mostly private wells. The red wells are artesian wells where the groundwater is under pressure at those sites. So a higher risk of, of breaching and encountering artesian conditions during, during construction of the pipeline. The three different aquifer types that are shown here, the orange is the sandstone bedrock aquifer, the purple is the uplands. Crystal and bedrock, a different type of bedrock, a different mineralogy. That's the area where most of blasting would take place because most of the orange areas that, that bedrock is buried under glacial sediments. The glacial aquifers here are only, the area is shown in green, although there could be some underlying the superficial clays, but above the orange that would be tapped by those wells. So the wells shown here at all different depths, the, the symbology doesn't indicate the depths of the wells, but the upper, upper bedrock wells are tapping into cracks and fractures in the rock for the groundwater, the glacial aquifers are pulling water out of saturated sand and gravel. So beyond the information that was provided by Enbridge, my review consisted of looking at US Geological Survey studies, Wisconsin DNR and natural history studies and databases, reading peer reviewed journal articles that were relevant to the region or the topics involved, also a doctoral dissertation, scientific conference proceeding volumes, technical reports and agency guidance documents. Based on numerical modeling of groundwater flow by USGS, the project corridor will impact recharge areas, confined aquifers, springs and groundwater, surface water interactions in the reservations headwaters region. Also, there will be down gradient downstream negative impacts, these would include impacts on groundwater flows, well yields, groundwater quality and surface water properties on the reservation. We've seen this image previously, this is the results of a numerical model of groundwater flow onto the reservation conducted by US Geological Survey. And what you can see is there's extensive areas off the reservation that are, are locations where groundwater originating as grain, as rainwater or snow melt that infiltrates into the ground and flows down gradient to, to, to basically groundwater downstream areas on the reservation. So this is kind of the extension of the on reservation aquifers into the off reservation areas. Now, just because you don't see an extension shaded here, that doesn't mean that there's no impact, it just means that the groundwater is discharging to surface water in those areas. So for instance, if you look to the west of the reservation, you see two long fingers of recharge that make their way onto the reservation, but a gap between the two. The groundwater that recharges in that gap is discharging to the, the stream that flows down the middle with the gap. So there's still a connection, it's just shifting from groundwater to surface water. This is a map of, of different amounts of recharge that are coming into the aquifer in different areas, so it depends on the, on the land cover, the soil type, the slope, et cetera. But what you can see is the upstream upgrading areas tend to have higher recharge. There's another representation of the artesian wells with these symbols with the two arrows coming out the top circles that you see, they appeared in yellow on a prior map, in this case, they're the circle symbol. So particularly to the, the west and the southwest of the reservation is where these artesian conditions are present, also to some extent to the east. So groundwater and surface water are linked, as I mentioned, as a single resource, so the groundwater impacts will degrade surface water as well on the reservation. There's a high likelihood of confined aquifer breaching during pipeline trenching and sheet pile driving, resulting in uncontrolled flow of groundwater, surface water, increased stream flow rates and corresponding increases in erosion. Also changes in downstream water quality parameters such as temperature and turbidity that can negatively impact stream dwelling beings and life stages. I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what those, what the temperature changes could be, but basically it could be in either direction. So with increased groundwater flow, temperature would be colder on average with a decreased groundwater flow, the stream temperature would then be warmer on average. And as an example of a, of a, of a breaching, this has already been mentioned, I'll mention again because it's an example of what can happen even with the best planning, January 2021, Enbridge line three construction breached artesian aquifer near Clearbrook, Minnesota, which resulted in a discharge of over 25 million gallons of flow before it was mitigated about a year later in January 2022. Pipeline construction can decrease groundwater discharge by changing the permeability of glacial aquifer sediments and can change the fracture patterns in bedrock. Result of this could be decreased or stopped flow of groundwater to surface water and stream beds and springs, decreased stream flow rates and water levels in wetlands, seasonal drying up of first order streams and permanent desiccation of wetlands. There are 90 seeps and groundwater influenced wetlands noted along the, the route by wetland experts, and also increased downstream water temperatures that can be negatively impacted, impact to, to stream dwelling beings, as well as obvious impacts to wells. So this is a map of the corridor intersection with wetlands, we've heard some previously today about wetlands. I'll draw your attention to the. Kind of turquoise colored circles which are, are locations of seeps or recharge features associated in most cases with wetlands. And you see a, a, a high concentration of them to the west of the reservation, a few to the south and. Another concentration to the southeast. As some of groundwater impacts to reservations, streams would also have impacts on species that are particularly dependent on groundwater, this would include listed species either threatened, endangered, or species of special concern, including freshwater mussels that use groundwater seeps as a port, and part of their habitat, waterfowl, including whooping cranes and piping plovers this morning, not so groundwater dependent, but still a downstream species, wood turtles that use groundwater seeps as a, as a winter hibernation. Location and lake sturgeon which spawn and lay eggs in the streams, and they're very dependent at the early life stages on groundwater quality or groundwater discharge to streams to maintain a constant temperature and water quality habitat. Tribal, tribal water quality standards that have already been mentioned today that I'll, I'll repeat would be in particular lowering of water quality. Defined as projected or observed diminished chemical, biological or physical integrity of reservation surface waters, which would include changes to water flow or water level. And, and I'm thinking here specifically about groundwater impacts on surface water in any of those areas, including the amount of water or the elevation of the water. Creation of, or alter, alternation, alteration of groundwater conduits would allow groundwater levels and surface water flows or alter them, which would negatively impact the designated uses of the tribe's surface water resources. Pipeline construction will alter flow paths and introduce contaminants to groundwater, these specific contaminants would be associated with construction and construction equipment leaks. Of spilled lubricant or fuel or hydraulic fluids, also drilling mud and additives, as we've heard about recently, and I'll come back to, and then mobilized natural minerals present in bedrock that would be released on a. Kind of potentially a slow, ongoing release because of the exposure of those rocks to groundwater flow and to, to oxygen. Western part of the reservation is upgraded from the Birch Hill community wells on the reservation, and the southeastern portion, corner of the reservation is most susceptible to impacts, similar to what we just heard. For the southwestern area, so this is a map produced by the Wisconsin DNR of groundwater contamination susceptibility, it's, it's basically a representation of how easy it is to contaminate the aquifers. The lower, lower elevations here, the green areas are harder to contaminate just because that area is much of it is underlaid by clay, so spills in this case would tend to end up in surface water rather than seeping in the groundwater. But as you get up into the upland areas with the fractured rock and the shallow bedrock becomes much easier for contaminants to make their way into the groundwater, this is independent of any construction activities, this is just a statewide map that shows areas of special concern for groundwater protection. So if you overlay this map, which shows the recharge areas for the, for the reservations aquifers on the, the footprint of the area, with that map, you can see that many of these fingers, especially to the south and the southeast of the reservation, extend off reservation, extend into those areas of high susceptibility to contamination. All right, shifting over to HDD impacts, again with a groundwater focus. The last speaker talked about the HDD crossings. An HDD actually usually consists of multiple passes through the same hole, so there's a, an initial low angle drilling of a, a small diameter pilot hole, a pilot hole enlargement that involves kind of pulling the drill string back through that hole to make it bigger, and then eventually pulling the pipe itself back through the hole again. So there's three passes, pressurized drilling fluid is used in all of those phases, and because there's uncertainty about the position of the drill bit, the subsurface geology, the confining pressure supplied by the surrounding formation, the drilling fluid release is unavoidable. Question is just where is, where are releases going to happen and how long will they persist and how much fluid will be lost? The line three pipeline construction, as, as was mentioned, had 28 inadvertent releases with a magnitude up to 9,000 gallons estimated. A higher risk of fluid losses are at, at these locations, which are already mentioned, White River, Brunswick River, Silver Creek, Potato River and nearby tributaries. There's also the potential for these fluids to contain PFOS and other chemicals as many of the additives in them are proprietary, so the concern is not only turbidity, it's also unknown proprietary additives in, in the fluid. This is the location of the HDD passes and the direct pipe pass. Just quite a bit about that, this is what a HDD drilling site looks like. So if you look at the top, you see a drilling rig, advancing a drill string at a low angle into the subsurface. In the center is a mud mixing area, number of tanks and pits with pumps, places to add drilling mud and other additives and circulate it to the drilling rig and pump it down, down the hole. But you can see even on this site, which has containment around it, there is, there is releases and spillage just associated with running that operation. So these are not really inadvertent releases, these are just kind of necessary construction site type releases. Subsurface impacts of the pressurized drilling fluid that's used in all phases, all the three phases that I mentioned, results in loss of, of drilling mud to the formation during drilling, which potentially degrades the groundwater quality and seals off flow paths to wells or seeps or springs or stream beds, it's, it's partially by design to seal off those roots. But those are, those, those routes can also become conduits for inadvertent releases if they're not characterized well. So one challenge with low angle drilling is when you transition from the unconsolidated glacial material, such as cobble, gravel, sand and clay into bedrock. Because of the low angle of intersection with the bedrock, the drill, drill bit can skip off of the bedrock surface effectively, so not enter at the point that was intended to enter, but move. In this case, usually closer to the, the surface feature that is trying to avoid, this can create a larger cavity and unconsolidate, unconsolidate material, it's difficult to maintain that cavity opening due to balancing in the mud pressure and the cavity wall collapse around the enlarging cavity. Increased mud pressure and moving the drill string in and out to deal with the increase, deal with this challenge of entering the bedrock and increase the chance of inadvertent release, hole failure or even stream slope failure. Here are five sites of particular concern, some of these sites were even identified by the, the contractors that were tasked with designing the, the stream crossings, the HD crossings, and they, they use the term significant and challenging for several of these, these crossings, noting some of the difficulties in terms of interaction between the, the glacial material and the bedrock, artesian pressures, et cetera, that would make them especially challenging. So the, the concern here is that. If the amount of pressure that's applied to the drilling mud exceeds the, the ability of the formation to contain that pressure, that's when you have a release. So as mentioned earlier, that can happen. Now, this is just a schematic diagram, it's not of any particular site, but it shows, in this case, the red is the depth of the, of the drill string as it goes down, crosses and then comes back up. The, the yellow is the, the mud pressure applied along that route, and then the, the blue line is the, is the confining. Force applied by the formation, so what you can see is if the, if the yellow line ever crosses the blue line, you get a release. So the two examples here are as, as you're coming up to the surface, that was mentioned previously, the, the thickness of, of geological materials overlying the, the drill string, as it gets thinner, its ability can find that pressure drops, so there's potential release there, there's also potential release at the deepest part of the drills, the, the drill path because the high pressures required to keep that hole open, also run the risk of finding some fracture, crack or conduit or, or abandoned borehole that will result in inadvertent, inadvertent release. So I won't go through this in detail, but I looked at the analysis that was done for, on, on behalf of EPA for the mile post four crossing. And how that calculation was done using the Delft equation, and the, the, the short analysis is that there's insufficient. Insufficient constraint of the actual conditions at the site to guarantee that the, the design parameters won't be exceeded and that it results in, in a inadvertent release, and some of these things that are not well constrained would be the cohesive strength of the soil, the, the layering of soils, so rather than using this. Often there's intubated soils that are not well constrained, characterizing the groundwater pressure and particularly changes, seasonal changes in groundwater pressure, so guaranteeing that the, the groundwater calculations took into account that variability, especially higher pressures that would be expected in the spring with higher recharge and changing water table conditions. The last thing I'll focus on here is blasting and blasting impacts, we heard. A characterization of this this morning that was maybe overly generous and minimizing the impacts of blasting, obviously, you know, even in a controlled setting, explosions or explosions, they're intended to fracture rock, the fractures will not. Limit themselves to the, to the trench of interest and they'll extend beyond that. So blasting uses, uses explosives, obviously for the excavation of rock, explosive residues and fractures that extend beyond the trench area may be left behind during this process. The near surface bedrock areas within 60 inches exist over 2% of the pipeline route, at least in, in wetland areas. And as an aside, I'll mention, it's been very challenging to actually compile all of the information on blasting, the locations and the lengths, and we've, I've heard today, even earlier presentations said it would be six miles of blasting, based on the table that I analyzed, I found over two miles of blasting. I've also seen another calculation that came up with nine miles of blastings, so quite a, quite a range, but definitely extensive blasting. Blasting will permanently alter the fractured bedrock aquifers along the corridor, so it's not a temporary impact, just filling the trench back in, does it make the impacts go away? The redirection of groundwater flow paths along the impacted, existing, along the impacted corridor will, will change existing rock fractures and create new rock fractures that are, are filled with groundwater. Introduction of the explosive constituents and other construction related contaminants to groundwater will occur, excess flow or reduced or eliminated flow and discharge of groundwater is a consequence, and then degraded drinking water wells and springs, dried up or flooded wetlands and streams are likely in the blasting area. So reminding you again of what, where we're talking about in terms of blasting, it's mostly these upland areas to the south of the reservation, this map shows with red stars that are, are so closely spaced, you really can't distinguish them where the blasting is projected to be necessary, primarily to the south and the uplands. But this map also shows the areas of artesian pressure, so what you can see. So what you can see is the the areas of highest concern, highest likelihood of artesian conditions being countered encountered, particularly south of the reservation, co-occur with the blasting areas. So being able to conduct blasting in a way that doesn't doesn't breach artesian pressure zones of groundwater is probably unrealistic. Mitigation, so the Enbridge prepared a wetland and water body restoration and post-construction monitoring plan that talks about mitigation if issues are encountered. And I quote from it here, I'll just read part of this. It says, examples of topography or hydrology related issues that may require additional restoration include unexpected ponding, unexpected drainage, and disruption to flow patterns. So I'll skip down to say that the planning knowledge is a potential for hydrologic disruption, but it only proposes superficial remedies. So changes in slope, things that would be done to to correct ponding. Subsurface issues created by permanent alteration of groundwater flow paths and modified seepage into or out of fractured bedrock cannot be addressed with regrading at the surface. So subsurface remedies would include things like grout injection, reexcavations, sealing of fractures from blasting or subsurface rerouting of flow, none of which are considered in the mitigation plan. And and blasting impacts are assumed to be minimal. So the corrective actions described are unlikely to be effective if that's how the blasting impacts are characterized. But that's probably, again, unrealistic. The problematic locations I've already touched on. So maybe I'll just skip through this and just talk about contamination from bedrock minerals. So the bedrock geology is not well characterized. The presentation this morning said that bedrock is primarily sandstone with no mineralization. That's not strictly true, even if the sandstone, which is in present in lower elevations. But the upper elevations have a completely different type of bedrock. It's a crystalline bedrock. So excess rock from blasting, which is known as muck, is planned to be reused as pipeline trench fill material rather than removed to some offsite location. Bedrock could contain constituents that may degrade the water quality, but the groundwater quality and the surface water quality at pose health risks, both human and ecological health risks. This could be from blasting agents themselves. We heard some discussion about nitrates and blasting residues, but lots of other things present in blasting residues, but also mobilization of nat- natural toxic or harmful elements that would be released in bedrock. So when they're present and sealed in the bedrock, they're less mobile. When they be become fractured and broken in smaller pieces, those minerals then become available for erosion and mobilization. They they would include, based on the geology of the area, arsenic, radon, radium, selenium, uranium, lead, boron, cadmium, lithium, phosphorus, vanadium, and other metals. Also asbestos four minerals associated with amphibols that have been detected in in the area. Phosphorus, which is in many cases the limiting nutrient in freshwater systems rather than nitrogen, which would result in neutrophication effects and algal blooms. And also sulfur bearing minerals such as iron sulfides that on exposure to atmospheric oxygen and moisture, and also acidophilic iron oxidizing bacteria can result in the formation of sulfuric acid. And as well as dissolved iron and precipitation of ferric hydroxide, both in groundwater and surface water, as well as pipeline degradation from released acid. Mobilized toxic compounds and acidic water can impact groundwater and surface water long after the constructions complete and could potentially compromise pipeline integrity. Bedrock mineralogy along the blasting segments of the corridor has not been well characterized. So the ability to say with certainty that these these natural minerals would not be encountered, not would be exposed is dependent on how well that characterization has been conducted. And based on what was available for my review, I didn't see very comprehensive examination of bedrock mineralogy. Mercury contamination was already mentioned, will be discussed in more detail, so I will skip over that. But the the role of groundwater and altering perch wetland hydrology is is an important factor for mobilization, remobilization, mercury. We we saw some of the concerns from expressed by Wisconsin DNR. I'm going to just highlight a few related to groundwater that were expressed by US EPA in the March 2022 letter, which included 27 pages of comments on that line five EIS. And I won't read all these, but just a few. There's a mention of well contamination by blasting agents, creation of French drain type conditions, which we heard were preventable with with trench breakers, but only if those trench breakers are 100% effective. Disturbed groundwater and surface water interactions and in-stream flow dynamics at stream crossings. This is all just quoting from EPA comments, potential impacts on aquatic fish and vertebrates. And EPA comment 16, which was also repeated, has come at 34, stated that in areas where wetlands occur in thin soils over impermeable bedrock blasting can generate new preferential soil moisture movement and or groundwater flow paths that can result in changes to wetland hydrology or even dewatering of wetlands, which may be one of the most significant impacts of groundwater, surface water, interaction along the pipeline route, especially in the upland areas. So in three summary opinions, the the proposed Enbridge line five reroute project will cause impacts that will violate tribal water quality and flow alteration standards. I mentioned one, but others have been mentioned that would also be violated. The project will create temporary and permanent negative impacts to groundwater quantity, quality, and related natural resources and beings on the Bad River Reservation itself and on lands and waters covered by the tribe's retained treaty rights. And finally, the the project's construction, including over 10,000 linear feet of blasting and substantial excavation in areas of artesian groundwater pressure will negatively affect natural resources and beings on the reservation and adjacent lands, such that permit conditions cannot be established to prevent. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
I think there's, do you want to take a break?
You take a break. I was just going to take your slides.
For the online audience, we're going to take a short 10 minute break before the next tribal speaker. So it's right now 12:00 PM Central Time will start at 2:22. Hey, welcome back. We're going to, the hearing is going to resume now. We're going to continue with the tribal testimony first in the room here. And then we'll go out to the gentleman that is virtually after that. I'll turn it over to the tribal.
Thank you. Okay, good afternoon. My name is Jessica Strand. I'm the environmental specialist for the Michigan City Natural Resources Department. I'll be kicking off MND's second presentation, which focuses on project pollutants that will affect the tribal water quality on the reservation. Sediment pollution is one of our main concerns. It will increase in waterways impacted by the project. He notes that the tribe will see a degradation of water quality on the reservation, which will violate the tribe's water quality standards. During the project, there will be many sources of sediment pollution, including, but not limited to inadvertent releases from horizontal directional drilling, construction site runoff, increased stream bank erosion, geo hazards, and long-term maintenance during operation. Some of these sources of sediment pollution were covered earlier by experts from water engineers and others like the impacts of inadvertent returns. So we're going to cover some of the sources of sediment pollution in this next, some of the other sources of sediment pollution in this next portion of the presentation. These photos on this slide are examples of our concerns, concerns including the effectiveness of erosion and sediment controlled best management practices like the dewatering structure shown in the bottom left corner. Increases in erosion due to the alteration of channels is shown in the center picture where another pipeline company rip wrapped a portion of the bad river to protect their pipeline, but only push erosive forces downstream. And pollution from long-term maintenance, like the impact shown in the photo on the right, where a tributary to North Fish Creek had to be ripped back due to the shallow, how shallow the existing line five was in that area. So according to shape file information shared by the applicant, approximately six files of the 41 mile route will be installed with horizontal directional drilling or direct bore, which leaves roughly 35 miles of the route to be trenched into the ground, not including the little bit to be completed as road bores. This includes digging through over six miles of wetlands, entrenching across 45 streams, swales, and other water course features, which is documented to be more than 234 feet of Wisconsin's public waters. Many of these will also require blasting to get across. The footprint of the project is almost doubled due to the addition of approximately 31 miles of access road constructed on the landscape as well. These access roads will be built across over seven miles of wetlands and an additional 46 streams, rivers, and water course features, including Campford Creek, Coil Creek, two locations on Germain Creek, Silver Creek, Tyler Forks River, and Vogue Creek, as well as numerous other tributaries in the watershed. Though not specifically listed as a breakdown in this slide, wetlands and water courses will also be impacted from the numerous pipeyards, valve locations, and false right of ways this project requires. All of these activities will increase sediment pollution in the watershed, regardless of the erosion and sediment control best management practice conditions in permitting in the permits. Along linear projects, there are numerous places where sediment can be introduced to the environment. As we called out in the previous slides, the disturbance of the landscape associated with approximately 35 miles of trenching it will take to install the pipeline will be a significant source of sediment pollution. As soils are cleared, graded, stockpiled, backfilled, and sometimes blasted to get the pipe in the ground. One example where we expect major pollution from the project that we have highlighted numerous times in our past comments is the trenching of WIRC 013F, a coniferous swamp a little northeast of the Tyler Forks Horizontal Directional Drill is shown in the is circled in the oval on this map. As you can see, most of the landscape between Tyler Forks River and the next road crossing, which is actually a little off this map to the northwest, is wetland with very few upland inclusions. WIRC makes up a large stretch of the wetlands in this area. And much of this wetland has standing and flowing water, including one of the missed water courses that is depicted in the new National Wetlands Inventory that was talked about by Esteban from Gliffwick in his presentation this morning. As you can see from the images on the left, taken from a promotional video for the Nexus Gans Nexus Gas Transmission Pipeline that Michael's installed between Detroit, Michigan, and Kensington, Ohio. Trenching in the pipeline requires a massive amount of soil landscape disturbance, even when passing through a landscape that does not require tree clearing, grubbing, and blasting. These photos are of WIRC 013F, the coniferous swamp near Tyler Forks that was shown on the previous map. This wetland and its upland buffer of mature white cedar and hemlock will be cleared of trees and brush, drained of water, graded entrenched. We've visited the site numerous times over the years throughout spring, summer, and fall, sometimes during drought conditions for the region. And the water levels fluctuated, standing water was present no matter the season. And there were areas where you could see flow farther into the wetland. Based on aerial images of the region, you would be able to see wetland. This wetland transitions into a beaver empowerment such metal before it empties into Tyler Forks downstream of the proposed HDD centerline crossing. To cross this well, to cross this with pipeline trenching, an impossible amount of dewatering would need to happen to even get the site remotely close to the to the image in the top right of this slide. Dewatering the site either by directly dewatering the trench or by installing dewatering wells prior trenching will impact more than the wetland within the workspace by drawing water from the wetland outside of the proposed workspace. Additionally, there are no nearby uplands in which to place the dewatering outfall structures, which means that dewatering discharge will likely be into the wetland nearby, which will be further disturbed by the construction of the dewatering structure and then pollutants and increased flow being discharged by it. Another source of sediment pollution from the construction sites will be generated by the access roads for the proposed project. In the more remote areas of the proposed pipeline corridor, many miles of access roads are proposed to be built to reach different segments of the centerline. As you can see from this map where we focus on the Tyler Forks. Many of the access roads cross wetlands and water courses. For example, just in this area highlighted in the circle alone, there are access roads crossing Felcher Creek, Tyler Forks River, Vogue Creek, and their tributaries, often at multiple locations. Sediment from the workspace entering these creeks will lower the water quality within the watershed and on reservation. Experts from WWE and Gliffwick have already presented on just how far downstream these pollutants will travel. Timber matting that is installed across wetlands and areas with softer wet soils can actually be pushed on into the soils because of equipment traffic. The sinking of the matting pushes sediments into nearby wetlands and streams as shown in both of the photos on this slide. Sediment can also be tracked along the construction matting and into upland areas, washing off both matting and uplands during storm events and into nearby water resources. This tracking can be clearly seen in the top photo. The use or condition use of timber mats will not protect water quality. With this slide, we just wanted to show you some more pictures that illustrate some of the impacts from access road. Figure two on the top left was taken out of our DCDD comment letter and is from the construction of Enbridge's line three in Minnesota. Amongst other things, the image shows that many layers and the many layers of matting it takes to build an access road in softer soils, which embeds the lowest levels of matting into the soil. The rest of the figures come from the inspection of the access road for Enbridge's installation of the check valve on the reservation in 2024. The photo on the bottom left shows the sediments being pushed out into the adjacent wetland when the access road was installed and being used. The photo on the top left shows the access road immediately after timber matting was removed in August of 2024, depicting just how much soil was disturbed and exposed and has the potential T road. The photo on the bottom right shows what a portion of the access trail looks like in April of this year. And while some revegetation has occurred, most areas where plants still haven't grown, there are and where soils were displaced and compacted, but were by the matting. As Mr. Peyton from WWE touched on, soil compaction reduces infiltration rates and increases runoff. One more activity area related to construction that we want to take the time to highlight today is the area known as the false right of way, which is essentially the extra workspace areas that the company uses to support the horizontal directional drilling and direct bore activities. These areas are usually quite large as they have to be long or longer than the section of pipeline that needs to be pulled through the Joe path. There are 12 HEDs and one direct drill planned for the project. Sites need additional space as they cannot align the pipeline segment pullback area with the regular centerline workspaces. As you can see with this map, the Trout Brook and Billy Creek false right of ways, these areas are quite large. In these specific workspaces, there are multiple streams and wetlands that will be impacted. Expecting to isolate the workspace pollution from entering the water resources is unrealistic, even with the correct implementation of best management practices is highlighted and shown in the image on the right, which is a screenshot from a video of an HDD workspace for a project drilling under the Santa Ana River. and shown in the image on the right, which is a screenshot from a video of an HDD workspace for a project drilling under the Santa Ana River. This image shows sediment leaving the workspace even with best management practices in place. This sediment pollution is an additional source to the HDD sediment pollution that right water engineers presented about in relation to the inadvertent releases. Sediment runoff from the construction site workspaces into nearby water resources is unavoidable, unavoidable, especially in linear projects like this one. The peer reviewed research we found supports the tribe's conclusion that construction of the proposed 41 mile pipeline will affect the tribe's water quality downstream. This research flags that even when best management practices are used, they oftentimes fail because they were either not installed correctly to begin with, or they were not maintained correctly. This is not surprising as it as it is rare to visit a construction site where all the best management practices are installed and functioning correctly. And if best management practices are failing or even failed to be installed, that means sediments moving offsite. Though we had quite a few images to choose from, we provided just three photos illustrating incorrectly and installed and maintain BM best management practices. The two photos on the left show more recent construction site along Highway 13 where Bay City Creek is being impacted from onsite and stormwater drainage because of the poor BMPs. Bay City Creek is one of the creeks that is proposed to be crossed on the west side of the reservation by the reroute. The photo on the right shows a failed installation of silt fence at another construction project where the silt fence is sagging and not trenched in, which made it all is about effective at protecting the water is not having it at all. Another point that was supported by the peer reviewed research we found is that even when best management practices are installed and maintained correctly, they fail to meet the goals set by regulations or the regulations themselves are actually inadequate. In the DNR's final environmental impact statement from 2024, it is noted that Enbridge proposes to install two sediment basins and 18 sediment traps in areas with concentrated land disturbance such as temporary staging areas. However, it then goes on to note that the sediment basins are designed to capture only 80% of the sediment runoff entering them. This means that we can expect 20% of the sediment leaving the site to enter nearby water resources, even if the sediment traps and basins are working effectively because the Wisconsin Administrative Code NR 151.11 only calls for a reduction of 80% of the sediment load carried and runoff is compared to no sediment or erosion controls. This code also even allows for even a higher amount of runoff to be acceptable if the reduction of to 80% is not practicable. Unfortunately, practicability allows for a lot of leniency and permit requirement state regulations for projects that will result in the degradation of the tribe's waters downstream. These photos on this slide highlight that even when BMPs are installed to meet requirements, they fail to be protective. Additionally, research of best management practices reflects that even when installed to maintain, even when installed to manufacturer specifications and operating in smaller storm event flows, sediment barriers do not fully capture sediment. This table is from a 2019 research paper that compared nine different sediment barriers operating during a simulated two-year 24-hour storm event from a half acre basin. For all three tests performed on each of the nine different BMPs, none were able to remove 100% of the sediment and four of the nine experienced failure. Here we've called out the best management practice that operated the best, which is shown in the top right, showing that on average, it only removed 93% of the sediment. This BMP is a heavy duty non-mobilen silt fence with a wire backing. We've also called out the best management practice that held back the least amount of sediment, which is shown on the bottom right. This is a sediment retention basin that only removes 63% of the sediment on average. The remaining best management practices fell somewhere in between the 63 to 93% average for removal rates. Other research found by these authors supports their findings as none of the studies they found showed a 100% removal rate for sediments from best management practices. Another interesting find from this 2019 study is shown in this figure. We split it up and highlighted some things to allow us to talk through it more clearly. But essentially, this figure shows the monitor change in turbidity from water before and after it entered these best management practices, or essentially the change in water quality. The areas on the graphs that we have highlighted in the orangish color about the 1.0 turbidity ratio show when the monitor change was an increase in turbidity in the water leaving the BMP in the area below in white indicates a decrease in turbidity. As you can generally see, results show that oftentimes improvement and degradation was not consistent. But for many of the BMPs, there was an overall increase in turbidity in the water leaving the BMP than what was flowing into it. This was especially true for the heavy duty silt fence, which we called out on the previous slide, is having an average 93% sediment retake retention rate, in which we've highlighted for highlighted here for you with the blue box in graph A. Well, this BMP showed a small improvement in turbidity at the beginning of the test period, during the latter half of the testing period, and as they allowed the silt fence to de-water, the turbidity was higher as it left the practice. Conversely, for the sediment basin highlighted in the green box in graph B, there was an improvement of turbidity during active testing and no change during de-watering. The sediment basin is the one that only captured 63% of the sediment is shown in the previous slide. What this research shows us is that even when a BMP is effective in capturing sediment, there can still be an overall degradation of water quality due to increased turbidity. The third point supported by the peer reviewed research we found was that a failure of was that failure of sediment and erosion control best management practices can occur even with proper maintenance and the impact is instantaneous when this happens. Most of these BMPs are installed to wetlands, water courses and other water resources. This can mean a degradation that can be instantly impactful and not detected or corrected until days or possibly weeks later. A couple of recent examples of this are shown in these photos on this slide. The four photos on the left are from a recent report submitted by Northern Natural Gas for an anomaly dig site along their Rib Lake line, pipeline upstream of the reservation and within the Bad River watershed. This silt fence that they had in place around the construction site failed this spring when sheet erosion caused the soils of the hillside to overwhelm the barrier and enter the water course in wetland down slope is shown in the top two left photos, the top two photos on the left. And then Northern Natural Gas worked to clean up the site, which you can see in the bottom two photos, exposed soils remained outside of the BMPs within the wetland and adjacent to the creek, which will result in sediment moving off the site until vegetation can be reestablished. The fifth photo on this slide shows another BMP failure along the access road to Enbridge's on reservation check valve site where the soils disturbed by the matting breached the straw bales and moved into the wetland that they were meant to protect. This is this is indicated on this photo with the yellow oval. The fourth point we discovered in the peer reviewed research is one that we all probably already know is that sediments are reaching water courses and watersheds undergoing active construction.